We got a crisis down on that.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Halton City Council. If you will stand, we will have the pledge and the invocation at this time. Our Father, we thank you for Halton City, for its citizens, its businesses, its families, and all the other ingredients that go to make up this very unique community. We're thankful tonight to have the opportunity to come together, to discuss the business of the city, to make decisions about the future of our community, and to hear from our citizens regarding issues that are important to them. Will you bless us tonight with wisdom, with patience, and with vision for a better Halton City? In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, again, welcome to our council meeting tonight. We appreciate all of you being here and all of you watching on cable TV. We will get immediately into the agenda, the first item, announcements and events. I believe Councilmember Lanford, you have an announcement to make tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I had an opportunity to talk with a coworker of mine, Mr. Scott Bates, who works at BNSF with me and attends church here at Calvary Chapel in Halton City. And Scott told me about a camp that he was involved in with several other members of my company, a group of men who took, I believe it was 25 children from Dayton Square Apartments, to a day camp here recently out at Camp Carter. Spent some time with them, just, it's a wonderful time for these children to be mentored and to see good role models. And just wanted to brag on those men and the involvement of Calvary Chapel and Love Never Fails International, which is associated with the Calvary Chapel and they're focused down there on Dayton Square Apartments. They've really taken some ownership of that, and we appreciate that. That's good, good community involvement, and want to encourage that and thank them for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Lanford, Mr. Muir, I believe your staff has some announcements to bring before us.
Yeah, our public information coordinator, Fran Burns, is making her way to the mic with about six or seven different things.
Good evening, thank you very much. A lot of the information I'm going to be talking about will be found in your city newsletter, which will be mailed to homes later this week, so people should be getting them in their mailboxes early next week, so. But something that's not listed in there is National Night Out, which is a week from tomorrow night, August the 2nd. The Halton City Police Department participates in this national effort to have neighbors turn on their outside lights, come outdoors, meet each other, and talk about crime prevention. And that happens from 7 until 9, that's nationwide, but to observe it here in Halton City, the law enforcement center will be open from 6 until 8, so that people can come and meet some of the police personnel, look through the building, and there's also a special kids program that they're going to be having for identification. So that, again, is 6 until 8 at the law enforcement center on Tuesday, August the 2nd. Project Rediratory, which is a phone book recycling program, starts on August 26 and continues through October 6. There'll be containers located at fire station number three, the water tower station, at Halton Road and Loop 820, to accept phone books from residents, apartments, and from businesses. Also, we wanted to remind people that school will be starting in about a week and a half. And we've gotten phone calls from bus drivers, actually, that have requested that we make this known, that it's illegal against Texas law to pass a school bus that has stopped to let students off or let students on. And most school buses are equipped with a warning system, either lights at the top of the bus, or a sign that actually kind of rotates out when it stops to do the unloading and loading. So we just want to make people understand and remember that if you see a school bus that has stopped loading or unloading their precious cargo, to please stop as well. The Second Annual Officer Gary Hires Memorial Softball Tournament will be held on Saturday, September the 10th, at North Park, at 7 o'clock, and this is a very enjoyable event because it pits the Halton City Fire Department against the Halton City Police Department, and I know the police department's going to want to get the title back this year because they, I think they got pretty skunked last year. So, so please turn out and support that. It's fun and it's a way to-
They weren't, they scored, right?
Well, they scored, yeah.
They weren't skunked.
Well, they did smell up the place a little bit, though.
Okay, that's September the 10th at 7 o'clock at North Park. A new Citizens' Fire Academy class will start in September, and this is open to residents, and it's a class in which residents can learn how the department operates, the equipment that they have, and the kind of services they provide. It's free, it's a very interesting class, and enrollment starts in August. So, I know Diane Branson, Councilmember Branson, took it last year, and she was in my class, and I know she attempted to climb the 80-foot ladder.
I was halfway up the ladder, and the wind started blowing.
Didn't look like halfway.
And I had on heels.
Well, maybe you can demonstrate this year when the new class is on.
With class.
It was a really good class, I was in that class with Diane, and I did not climb the ladder, so hats off to her. The Halton Recreation Center will celebrate their grand opening at September 24th, and you might want to mark your calendars. The ribbon will be cut at 10 o'clock in the morning, and it's going to be a celebration. I think people will be able to come and see that the rec center certainly was worth the wait. And the Halton City Fire Rescue Open House will be the same day, September 24th, but it starts at 11 o'clock, so we're hoping that people will come to the ribbon cutting and then go down to the fire department for that open house. And that's what I have for this evening, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. We move now to the reports. Item number one on the agenda is the monthly financial report for May 2005. Joel Welsh, our finance director.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. The investment, budget report and investment report that's been included in your packets are for the period, fiscal year period through June 30th. That is nine of our 12 months are now completed, and I am pleased to report to the council that the, all of the operating funds are in pretty good shape right now. In particular, the general fund is, is on track for a very favorable finish. Property tax collections are right on target. Sales tax collections so far this year are about 11 percent better than what we expected, you know, in comparison to the same period of last year. Some of the other revenue areas are suffering a bit, but the strength in the sales tax is compensating for licenses and permits, so, which is, of course, our most troubling area. But the other sources of revenue for the city are quite strong, and in the miscellaneous area, interest income has well exceeded expectations for the year. On the expenditure side of the house and the general fund, everyone is staying within their allotted budgets. At this point, we're about 72 percent of budget, and comparing that to being at the 75 percent point of the year, it means everyone is doing a pretty good job. We are projecting that the general fund will come in just fine and add a bit of money to the fund balance. The Water and Sewer Fund revenues are projecting better now than they were a few months ago. The warmer, drier weather has translated into improved sales. I still am projecting that we will probably reach about 98 percent of budget on the revenue side. The other side of the ledger, of course, is the expense side, and due to some careful management by the administrators of the Water and Sewer Fund, we believe that we're going to be able to bring the Water and Sewer Fund in pretty much to a break-even point. The balance of the funds, the Drainage Improvements Fund and Street Reconstruction Funds are in very good shape at this point. Of course, the Street Reconstruction Fund is benefiting greatly from higher-than-anticipated sales tax collections. A similar case can be made for CCPD, but as I said, everyone is being very careful with their expenditures, and everyone is staying within their budget allotments. So the budget overall is in, is in good shape, as we're heading into the last few months, and barring anything unforeseen coming in to affect these outcomes, I think we're going to be in a very good financial position by the end of the year. Also attached is the investment report for the month of June. Our weighted average yield of the portfolio has climbed to now 3.11 percent as a, as a total, and that is, that is the best that we've seen in the city for quite some time. About 40 percent of the portfolio is now invested in agencies and certificates of deposit, which are virtually all earning in excess of this rate. The older stuff is maturing off and being replaced with, with, the agencies are paying on a two-year basis, or right at 4 percent to, sometimes as high as 4 and 1/4 percent. So the, the performance of the fund, of the investment activity is improving. Even now, we're still making gains on our weighted average yield, and yet we're still continuing to adhere to the investment policy strictly with all of our investment choices. I would mention that the overnight investment pools are paying about 3 and 1/4 percent now, which is still higher than our weighted average yield. We bought two CDs during the month of June, face amount of $100,000 each. We only buy the CDs for one year at a time. We buy the agencies with a two, two-year maturity, but the CDs are earning 3.65 and 3.55 percent. And as I mentioned, when we reinvest some agencies as they come due again, we'll be investing in about the 4 and 1/4 percent range. And all of this is, is serving to be very helpful to the operating funds and helping to, to offset the potential of, of rate increases or, or tax increases.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Members of the council, any questions or comments?
Mayor-
Mr. Welsh, one thing, yes, please.
May I go ahead and, I almost forgot to pull my page out and talk about the final thing. I'm not used to talking about this in a monthly report, but we received the, the certified role value from the Chair and Appraisal District today. And I am pleased to inform the council that between June 12th, when we received our last report, and July 25th now, the estimate, or the preliminary estimate of appraised values from the appraisal district has increased by about $59 million. This is about a 4 and 1/2 percent increase in overall value. We were anticipating probably about a 3 percent adjustment from June to July, so we were pleasantly surprised to see this change of 4 and 1/2 percent of values. It's rather remarkable in a, in a, in kind of a fully-developed city like Halton City, and so, like I said, we're pleased to see this. This is going to alleviate some pressure that we've been talking with you about in the workshops, about the need for a significant change in the property tax rate. It mitigates a good bit of it, and we'll be giving you more details about that tomorrow night at the workshop.
Okay, thank you very much. I do have one question for you regarding the sales tax revenue. I noticed in the information you gave us, you are projecting the sales tax revenue to exceed the budget by approximately $475,000. Can you elaborate on that a little bit? Is that because of a conservative projection at the beginning of the budget year, or is this a general climate, an improved business climate in Halton City, or is it a specific sector or issue that might be responsible for that, that additional amount?
It's a combination of about three things, Mayor. We had, we'd been rather conservative in our initial estimates because we were not sure of the strength of the local economy and the general economic recovery that had been going on in the metroplex, and so we were, we were a bit surprised, and pleasantly surprised, I would add, to, to see the, the growth in the numbers and, and the collections. A second factor was, of course, the ongoing sales tax audit that is being conducted for the city by MBIA that resulted in about a $225,000 lump sum payment to the general fund from, well, from, primarily from City of Fort Worth's collections. And it was due to the fact that there were some businesses located in Halton City that were mistakenly paying their sales tax collections to the credit of Fort Worth, or perhaps one of the other cities along our border. And MBIA went and checked these businesses, found out they were reporting in the wrong place, were able to tell them which place to report to in the future, and went back to the state of Texas and filed a claim. So about nearly half of that $475,000 has come from that, from the MBIA audit, and that will pay, even though that's a one-time payment this time, it's going to pay us benefits in the future because, as I mentioned, those businesses are now paying to our credit instead of to Fort Worth, or North Richland Hills, or another laboring city. And the third thing is the effect of the council's, well, I mean, of the citizens passing the beer and wine sales tax. That has also had an impact, a, it's hard to measure at this point what the exact impact of that has been, but we are certain that it has been a significant player in the increase in sales taxes here.
Okay, Mr. Muir?
Joel, when MBIA did their study, how far back did they go?
They can go back three years-
Okay.
-for past collections.
Did they go back three years on this one?
Whenever they could. Some businesses hadn't been in business for three years, but everywhere that they could go back three years, they did.
So that, just wanted to point out that that 270, 275?
225,000.
225,000 doesn't necessarily represent one year's sales tax from these folks that were not. It goes back several years, so.
Yes, sir, up to three years.
And I have one other question regarding the general fund. Overall revenue within the general fund, pro rata, according to this, should be at the end of, the three-quarters should be 12.9 million, and you indicated it's about $511,000 more than that.
Yes, sir.
What you just said, does that attribute to most of, of that, of that increase, or are there other factors that cause us to be ahead of where we ought to be by a little over a half million dollars in revenue?
The sales tax is part of it, but a, a big part of why our revenues are, are ahead of the, the year is, is partially due to the fact that we collect sale, property tax very early in the year, and so it gets us ahead, and, and so we're pretty far along with our property tax collections, but also coupled with the sales tax collections, and a little bit better than expected performance in the municipal court. Has had a lot to do with that, all of those.
Okay, thank you very much. Members of the council, any other questions? Okay, we need a motion to approve the financial report that's just been presented. Councilmember Branson?
Thank you, Mayor. I move we approve the financial report as presented.
Councilmember Sutton?
Just for a second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion on the motion. If you will, register your vote, and that passes by unanimous vote of the council present. And I did not mention earlier, but I think all of you can see, Councilmember Holcomb is not, not here tonight, so the vote was 6-0 in favor of, of the motion. Item number two, the capital improvement status report. Mr. Muir?
Thank you, Mayor. As far as Jerry, if you haven't driven a Jerry, you can now drive at the paving, the concrete paving on the street has been completed there, starting with driveway approach and sidewalk construction now. Project should be complete by late September of '05. On Aurora Street, the sanitary sewer mains and the services installation has been completed, and water main installation has started. Parish and Salona, this is a relatively new project to this report, it's not necessarily new to this council, though. This is a CDBG project that we recently submitted to Tarrant County and have won approval for. Tarrant County will be administering, again, administering this project. The city will be getting about $100,000 for it. And while Parish and Salona aren't exactly near each other, there, there are street projects and park improvements that are going to be happening on both those streets in this, in this one project. For Parish Road, approximately 4,400 feet of street will be milled and replaced with asphalt overlay, along with 100-foot of sidewalk. In addition to the, to the Parish Road Park that's right there on Parish and Gibson, we're going to be installing a new playground system. It'll be handicap-accessible sidewalks and handicap-accessible curb ramps for the park. On Salona, around Salona, rather, on Salona Street, Salona Circle North and Salona Circle South, about 2,500 feet of street will be milled and replaced with overlay, in addition to 200 feet of curb and gutter and 300 feet of sidewalk. And also at that park, which is Pecan Park, a new play system, we put it in there, that will also be handicap-accessible. And drainage, there is one thing that I just found out today on the Little Fossil Creek Improvement Project, that, as you recall, the Corps lost its funding for that project, and this project's been kind of stalled. It was looking at trying to have us do it out of our proceeds. Well, today, the Corps freed up 50 grand towards this. It's not enough to, to get us to the point where we needed this year, but it's a very good start, so hopefully that'll be a good thing for signs, signs to come, but they've, they freed up $50,000 for the design on this thing. Water and sewer projects, recently the council awarded a project to, on the Skyline Mobile Home Park and Swan Street project. Again, these, these two things aren't necessarily near each other, but they're combined in the project because they're both sanitary sewer lines. Council recently awarded a contract to Pegasus Utilities, which I signed earlier today for Skyline Mobile Home Park. We do have responsibility for the sanitary sewers there, and will be replacing the existing sewer main, which is located, a lot of backyards are underneath the homes. We're going to be locating, relocating it underneath the street and putting, and then, of course, repairing the street, putting the street back to what it was before. But we're just responding to way too many calls down there, and those folks need, need that line replaced. Same thing with Swan Street. This is Swan Street north of Joy Lee, that the, will be replacing the sewer line along Swan Street also. It's, both, both these things will go for about $700,000, and it'll take about six months to complete. They'll probably start in about 30 days. In building, for those who were paying attention to Ms. Burns's announcements, she was not mistaken when she said, "We're actually going to have ribbon cutting on the rec center," strange as it may seem. No bun is more thrilled than I. Scheduled for September 24th, they are, they started laying a gym floor Friday, so hopefully that thing will be finished probably in the next two weeks, two weeks, a little bit more. But if you haven't been by there, landscaping's really taken effect over there in the last couple of weeks, so we're not quite finished with it, but it should be looking awful, awful good when it comes time to that ribbon cutting. But the gym floor should be finished in the next two, certainly three weeks. A new project to this report is the Senior Center project. This is something that's been planned for quite a while. Couple of years ago, the city issued $250,000 in COs and certificates of obligation for renovation work at the Senior Center. What the project's going to include is a little bit of wall movement around the kitchen area and the restrooms, dining area and kitchen modifications, office and support area realignment, creating a new reception area, replacing and renovating floors, updating lighting in some areas, doing ADA expansion in the, in the restrooms, painting and interior floor, excuse me, painting and interior finish upgrades. We're hoping to start this thing in early September, and the Senior Center activities will be moved to the Moose Lodge. Originally, we were going to move them to the rec center, and that's part of why this thing has taken so long, because the rec center's taken so long, but recently the Moose Lodge, the folks over at the Moose Lodge, which is adjacent to the Senior Center, offered their facility to the seniors, and they've certainly graciously accepted their generous offer. It's, hopefully the seniors will only be displaced a very short time. The goal is that the seniors will be eating Thanksgiving dinner in their new facility, newly remodeled facility. I'll conclude with the North Oaks Tank Project. Exterior painting has been finished, the logo's on the tank. We are doing a final inspection on the roof supports and stuff, so we're almost finished with that thing. So with that, I'll take any questions from the council regarding this report.
Councilmember Sutton, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Tom, on the Senior Center, this is kind of late in the project, but I would still like to know, has Bobby Arthur and some other seniors had a chance to look at the final plans to make sure we don't have any gotchas that are going to happen once they start to construct? Saying, "I wish we'd have done it this way."
They have had an active role in the plans. They have had meetings, specifically Ms. Arthur has, I'm not, not so sure the, you know, running it by all the people, all, all the seniors out there, but Ms. Arthur certainly had a very, very active role in the planning of this.
Have they seen the final plans, though?
Final plans are still being fine-tuned, but no, they have not been finalized.
Will there be a process to make sure they can see the final plans?
Oh, sure.
Excellent. Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that.
Councilmember Hutchison?
Tom, you didn't mention the, the library, but I'm, I know that this is something that's ongoing, and I see here, too, that the, the contract's been awarded for the design of the library. A lot of that depends on the, on the land on which we build the library, so I presume, and I guess maybe I should ask, couches as a question, are we going to come up with a number of different designs, or a couple of different designs depending upon the land where we build it, or what buildings we might purchase and so on and so forth?
Something along those lines. I don't know if we'll have various different designs. I think they're going to take into a lot of input from the library board and the staff, and- and the staff, and try to come up with a concept that meets those needs and desires. Not sure it's going to have several different to choose from, I haven't gotten that far with them, I think I'm just looking for a schematic, and then we'll, uh, massage that from there.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Uh, just a comment from me, Mr. Muir, the, uh, rec center, the, uh, landscaping sure is looking nice, it's, uh, still unfolding, still got some, uh, uh, trees and shrubs and things to, to go, to be put in place, but it sure does look nice, it just really dresses it up and accents it.
Looks a lot better than weeds, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Looks a lot better than weeds out there.
Okay, uh, there being nothing further on the capital improvement status report, we don't need a motion regarding that, we move then to item number two A, this is an, uh, addendum to the original agenda that was posted, uh, appropriately, uh, last Thursday to add an item at this point for discussion, it is an update on the use of the Halton City Economic Development Corporation funds. Mr. Muir, you want to lead off?
Sure. When I, um, added this to the agenda, it's, uh, I thought it was something I could, uh, I guess handle, handle easier than what it's turned out to be, this'll, uh, come back on the next, uh, council meeting agenda. I thought tonight we, uh, could kind of go over a little bit about what we're, what the, um, what the EDC is, can do, and, uh, Wayne's going to go over a little bit of that, but, uh, uh, in two weeks, we'll come back with a, uh, a full presentation going back several years as far as where, uh, where things have gone and, uh, what's been done, uh, and, uh, hopefully some of the successes of the EDC. Wayne, if you can tell us, uh, what, um, what's eligible, and certainly the impact of the House Bill twenty-nine twelve from, uh, two years ago.
Okay, uh, let me start off by giving a little bit of history behind economic development corporations. Economic development corporations are authorized pursuant to state statute that was originally adopted in nineteen seventy-nine, and the statute is known as the Development Corporation Act of nineteen seventy-nine. Originally, this statute envisioned that these corporations would be vehicles for fostering manufacturing and industrial jobs, but over the years, it's changed to be more economic development in nature. Initially, after the statute that created economic development corporations was adopted, it provided no source of funding for these corporations, they relied mostly upon donations or, um, other means of obtaining money, and they were largely ineffective, but in nineteen eighty-nine, and then later in nineteen ninety-one, the legislature authorized cities to adopt sales taxes for purposes of funding economic development, uh, projects within the state of Texas. As background, Halton City created its Economic Development Corporation in nineteen ninety-five, an election was held in that year, and initially, a sales tax of a quarter cent was adopted by the citizens, and this quarter cent sales tax was increased to a half cent in January of two thousand. The legislature, as I said, gradually increased the number of projects that economic development corporations could spend monies on, and first, a four B corporation, which is what Halton City has, a, a corporation is either, either going to be labeled as a four A or a four B corporation, and that just depends upon which section of this state law they were created under. Halton City has a four B corporation, and the legislature, over the years, gave authority to four B corporations to attract commercial and retail businesses, and then later, they were given authority to fund municipal improvements such as parks and municipal buildings. Tom mentioned, uh, House Bill twenty-nine twelve, this was a statute that was adopted by the legislature in the last legislative session, June nineteenth, two thousand and three, House Bill twenty-nine twelve took effect, and what the legislature had previously given to four B corporations, it took away a lot of those powers in, in the year two thousand and three. So the, the citizens understand economic development corporations, although they have sales tax monies for economic development purposes, they are limited by the statute to only spend monies on projects that are listed under the statute, and if a project is not listed, it cannot be, uh, spent, monies cannot be spent for that type of project. There are a couple of different sections that authorize projects, but generally, before House Bill twenty-nine twelve was adopted, you could spend money on a project for land, buildings, equipment, facilities, infrastructure and improvements that promoted new and expanded business development, or that the board of directors of the corporation found were suitable for manufacturing and industrial facilities, transportation facilities, distribution and warehouse facilities, and a whole laundry list of other facilities. What House Bill twenty-nine twelve did is it drastically changed the definition of a project, and now, the expenditures of monies for those purposes has to be related to the creation of what is known as primary jobs. And primary jobs, um, are mostly blue collar or financial jobs, they're very limited in scope, and, and, uh, as I was explaining, unless a project specifically is going to create primary jobs, then the, the expenditure of monies by the Economic Development Corporation would not be allowed anymore. Um, I won't go into a lot of detail tonight about the primary jobs, but that, that was a major handcuffing of the ability of, of, uh, economic development corporations to spend monies on projects. What we can still do, um, that does not require primary jobs, is the Economic Development Corporation can spend money on infrastructure such as streets and roads, rail spurs, water, electric and gas utilities, drainage and telecommunications. Before the House Bill twenty-nine twelve, again, we could have spent money for municipal buildings and learning centers such as libraries, but now, since House Bill twenty-nine twelve has taken effect, the legislature has eliminated municipal buildings and learning centers from the definition of a project. There are some other limitations that, uh, I'll go to, into as much detail as necessary at the next meeting, but, uh, I just wanted to give a, an overview of the fact that we have been limited by the legislature on our use of monies for projects that previously the Economic Development Corporation may have funded or may have been allowed to fund, and, and because of the change in the law, we have to look specifically through the legislature to see whether or not a particular project is going to be authorized. Tom, is that detailed enough, or is there anything in particular you want me to address in addition to that?
No, no, that covers it, and, and again, um, we'll be going into greater detail in two weeks, I'm, I'm, I apologize for not being more ready, is, is, I thought this was going to be a much simpler thing when I added this Friday, but, uh, and, and looking at it over the weekend and today, it's, 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 would just create a lot more questions, so I'm, I'm just going to deal with it in two weeks, and it'll be on the agenda, um, on the, whatever date the next meeting is, August something. But, uh, anyway, uh, if that's the first, uh, meeting, yeah, August eighth.
Uh, members of the council, any questions or comments on anything? Mr. Muir, our, our attorney has, uh, stated regarding the use of EDC funds tonight. Councilmember Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Wayne, this one's for you. And I'm, I may be totally off, but if we've already started a municipal project with the EDC, it can continue to be fun, such as the library?
That's correct, uh...
I didn't want that negative note to be hung over the city that boom.
The, the, um, Attorney General has ruled, because there were a lot of questions regarding projects that had been commenced, and then the legislature kind of yanked the rug out from under EDCs, it came out of nowhere in two thousand and three, where all of a sudden a limitation was put on projects, but the Attorney General has ruled, and the legislature to some extent spoke of, of this in their, in their legislation, but any project that was commenced prior to June nineteenth, two thousand and three can, can be, can be continued, and, and the Attorney General has ruled that if the project was authorized at a public meeting prior to House Bill twenty-nine twelve, then it can be continued.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything further? Okay, please remember the comment Mr. Muir made to begin with, this will be back on the agenda at the next council meeting, there will be much more detailed discussion, uh, of, uh, of, of this issue at that time. Okay, we move now to the consent agenda, and to my knowledge, since I have, uh, have served as your mayor, this is the first time every item that required action, uh, with the exception, of course, of the, uh, financial report, uh, is on the consent agenda tonight. Now, consent agenda is considered to be routine, self-explanatory, and it will be enacted by the council with one motion. Approval of the consent agenda by the council authorizes the city manager to, uh, implement each item in accordance with staff or board recommendations, so, members of the council, I'm ready for motion regarding items three through ten, and I don't have any idea which light came on first, I was looking down, Councilmember Reese?
This is for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, Councilmember Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I thought we were going to have some discussion on one of the items before the motion?
Once I have a second, uh, we'll call for discussion on the motion.
That's for a second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, uh, now we're ready for discussion, I think on item number five, if you're following along on your agenda, I think there is going to be some particular discussion on that, Mr. Muir, if you want to begin, and then we're followed by Councilmember Langford and Councilmember Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. For, um, uh, for the citizens at home or, or here, if, uh, this is, uh, regarding an ordinance, uh, denying Atmos Energy's request for a grip rate increase. And what the grip rate is for Atmos is the Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program Rate. Now, that doesn't tell you a whole lot, but it applies to the cost of service component of a gas bill. The city has initial jurisdiction over the, over this thing, and, and, uh, when it was first presented to the city, uh, in December of oh four, uh, the city suspended their request, uh, took effective action on that in Jan-, in early January of oh five. Also, at that same date, uh, the council author, authorized the city to participate in the, uh, in a coalition of other cities to fight this rate increase, and this is something we typically do with other, uh, rate increases, whether it be electric or, uh, or gas, or, or any other thing that's utility related, the cities, the cities band together. And as such, uh, the, the coalition of cities and Atmos have gotten together several times and, and discussed, uh, the rate increase, uh, we've come to, uh, some of the justification that Atmos has given for their rate increases did not seem to pass, uh, pass muster. Uh, I don't want to go into all those details right now, but, uh, everybody agreed from Atmos's standpoint and the city's standpoint to just go ahead and deny the rate increase, and then there, we're going to take another stab at, uh, doing something later on, uh, and working with Atmos, but, uh, the, the item that the council has before it tonight is the first reading of the ordinance that is denying Atmos Energy's grip rate increase. If that'll take any questions.
Councilmember Sutton, do you have a question for Mr. Muir?
It was just to make sure that Tom covered this issue, thank you, Tom.
Anyone else have a question on, uh, item number five? Mr. Muir, thank you for the explanation you gave, and, uh, uh, hopefully that will clarify the issue in the mind of the citizens, this, uh, item number five, to deny the request for, uh, a rate increase by our supplier of natural gas. Okay, no further discussion on the motion, I'll call for the vote at this time. If you'll register your vote, and that is a unanimous vote. Okay, we move now to the Vista Citizens Forum portion of our meeting. This time is set aside for any person having business before the council that is not scheduled on the agenda to have an opportunity to speak to the council. We have had nine requests, speakers' request forms filled out, and I will call those in order in just a moment. To those who will be speaking, I want to remind you that all comments must be directed toward the presiding officer rather than to an individual council member or staff. Also, to remind you that each speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request form, and must refrain from personal attacks toward any individual. For those who have filled out the speaker's request form, a six-minute time will be granted. For those who may wish to address the council who have not, uh, filled out a speaker's request form, three minutes will be granted. Council cannot discuss or debate any issue brought forth at this time, nor can any formal action be taken, since, uh, the subjects that are brought up were not a posted agenda item in accordance with the open meetings law. Having said that, our first speaker's request card tonight is Mr. Larry Brogdon, uh, who wishes to address us on the subject of gas lease, and Mr. Brogdon, if you will, although I have it here, if you'll give us your name and address, uh, for the record. Okay, before you do, if I might recognize the arrival of our council member, Chris Holcomb, and may the record reflect, uh, his being here. Mr. Brogdon, uh, you have six minutes.
Yes, my name's Larry Brogdon, and I'm with Four Sevens Oil Company, uh, we're located seven 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 Taylor Street, uh, suite ten ninety in Fort Worth, down in the Fort Worth Club, uh, building. We are an active oil and, uh, natural gas explorer, we've been drilling wells down in the Trinity River bottoms and bringing in quite a bit of infrastructure. We would like to see the city of Halton City put up, um, city properties, uh, for oil and gas lease, the, uh, rock formation that we've been drilling to, that many of you may have, have heard of, the Barnett Shale, it's certainly underneath the city, there is gas there. We brought a market in with the pipelines, um, we've had very good success, not only us, but there's another company involved that's been drilling down here, and, um, certainly, we'd like to see the citizens of, uh, Halton City benefit from bonuses, royalties, and, uh, ad valorem taxes, which can be quite significant, and not only to the city, but the citizens, because, uh, we, Four Sevens have, our little niche is, is drilling eventually underneath homes, and, uh, where, uh, when you're in established neighborhoods that have been here for quite a while, most of them, most of the, uh, people that own their homes own their mineral rights and can participate in the royalty. So, uh, nobody's going to get rich on it, but it's like having a little annuity that you never dreamed that you would have. So, um, I'm just here to urge the city to think about putting up, uh, city lands for oil and gas, uh, leasing.
Thank you, Mr. Brogdon?
Brogdon.
Brogdon, I got it right that time, thank you very much. Our next speaker, uh, tonight, uh, is Mr. Gene Snow. He wishes to speak on mineral leasing, Halton City Mineral Leasing. Mr. Snow, give us your name again, uh, and your address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and, uh, City of Halton City Council. I've been up here a couple of times, and obviously, my main objective this evening is very similar to Mr. Brogdon's, and that's to urge the city council to bring forward the lands owned by Halton City and put them up for bid, which I think is by law, and, uh, let those of us who may have an interest bid on them, and you folks decide who should get them, but I really truly believe that they should be, uh, brought forth because there's money laying down there, and if any poor little city needs it, it's probably this one. Uh, I won't tape it a minute, well, six minutes. Did some quick numbers, I, I shouldn't even, I don't know if I have a right to say it or not, but TAD is available on the internet, Tarrant Appraisal District, many, many sheets of, uh, Halton City ownership, and probably not every situation do they own the minerals. However, uh, there hasn't been many minerals available in this area for, to go get since the Barnett Shale, and so probably everybody owns their minerals, and probably the city owns theirs. They have two hundred and sixty-four point six-two acres listed with TAD, and zero to one acres are forty, zero to five acre, these are track sizes, seventy-six acres, zero to ten, forty acres, ten plus acres, a hundred and seven, it's two hundred and sixty-four acres. I took two hundred of them, put sixty-four aside, they may be too small, they may not be in our units that we elect to, to make. And using the price of gas at around seven dollars, six fifty, if a well makes two million cubic feet a day, two million cubic feet a day, which is half what one of the wells, one of the companies has about a mile from us down here on the river, it's making nearly four million, if these wells do two million, half of it, that's about five thousand dollars a month per ten acres, about five thousand dollars a month per ten acres. Now, if you have two hundred usable acres, I, my backwards stuff, I'm not a good, uh, guy with numbers, but, so that's twenty ten acre lots, times five thousand, it's a hundred thousand dollars a month, that's a million two a year. Now, if the well's coming better than two million a year, obviously we'd do better. If the well does less, it'd be a little bit less, that's using a twenty percent... That's using a 20% royalty figure. The general rule, well, I'll get into that later, is 20 acres with no drilling site, 25, 20% royalty with no drilling site, 25% royalty up to with a drilling site, because drilling sites are hard to get. But anyway, there's a million two maybe we may have available to us. And according to Mr. Langford, he helped me, and just the Territorial Appraisal District for the Economic Development Group, they have about 36 acres listed, and that's about $222,000 a year in royalties for the EDC. So, 220, 200 for EDC and a million two for Holtham City on the relatively conservative side. That's no lease bonuses is paid upfront. That'll be negotiated with the cities and the EDC at the time. And they also have, what did you, ad valorem taxes you mentioned? So, additional monies, I mean, it could be substantial. I wanted to let you guys know how important that was. I'd like to urge you to get this out into us as soon as we can. Those of us that may be fortunate enough to win the bid need to make our plans, make our units, submit them to the Railroad Commission, and go forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Our next speaker, David Harper. David wishes to speak to us on the subject of encourage the leasing of city-owned mineral rights. Mr. Harper, your name and address for the record, please.
Just talking to echo in here. David Harper, 5600 North Beach. What the two previous speakers are referring to is an opportunity. You have, as our elected officials, an opportunity to reap a tremendous windfall. That is, if you recognize the magnitude of the windfall. It's been agonizingly slow to get the city to move on leasing its, rather, our public lands, and I understand some of the reasons why. I realize that you're trying to protect some of the public lands for the future surface use, and that is to be commended. That's prudent management on your part. But as Ross Perot told the Northeast Chamber the other day, you've got to manage your minerals and your surface, not just your surface. And I want to encourage you to think that way. The gas has been here for a million years, maybe 6,000, depending on your religious views, and you're thinking maybe that that gas can wait. And I think that's a fallacy. And the reason being, when gas producers begin working in our areas near our publicly-owned lands, if they drill and we're not in with it, they may suck our gas out, our gas, the residents' gas, and they may damage, I'll say damage is not the right word, but they may put an encumbrance on the very properties, the surface that you're trying to protect. And in the end result would be, if you wait too long, is you damage the surface and the ability to use it for something else, maybe. And the gas gets sucked out, and we accomplish nothing if we wait too long. You know, many people go through life wishing they'd win the lottery or have a rich uncle leave them inheritance, or just a windfall, a financial windfall. Our windfall is right now, and we need to take advantage of it. As I said, Richland Hills, Fort Worth, Hazlet Saginaw, they're reaping their windfall, and so should we. This community lost the county seat election in 1856, and I don't know that we've ever recovered from it financially or psychologically. We are now going to catch a break, and we need to seize that opportunity. I can't encourage you enough to move prudently, but as soon as you can. And to borrow a line from my favorite singer-songwriter, the great Neil Young, "In the field of opportunity, it's plowin' time again." Let's get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Our next speaker, I believe it's Mr. Polo, is that correct? Oh, that's, is it you, Ms., are you Ms. Polo?
No, I'm Anna Johnson. We are neighbors.
Okay. I have a speaker's request form by, from a Mr. Polo. Do we have a Mr. Polo in the audience? Okay, that is you.
Yes.
Okay, are you going to address the council at this time, or is...
Yeah, I'm going to, she would have the same problem. She kind of speaks, I don't speak too good English.
Okay. Okay, so she's going to speak for you.
That's right.
Okay. Anna Johns, is that correct?
I didn't, I, I, I spoke to him.
Okay. Okay, Anna Johnson, if you will, come on up to the speaker's stand, please, and you wish to speak. You wish to speak on the subject of streets, Mink Drive.
On Mink Drive, yes, sir.
And if you will, give us your name again and your address, and introduce us to your friend. This is the first time we've had someone bring a friend with them to the speaker's stand.
It's the first time he's been to the council meeting. His name is Benji, and he is a seizure service companion for me. So, if he starts making a noise, I will excuse myself and go have a seizure and come back. So, that's it.
Okay, please.
And my name's Anna Johnson, and we are here, Mr. Polo and I, on behalf, really, of the whole block of Mink Drive, our streets. I brought pictures, I'm going to leave them with you. I took pictures. We are in desperate need of having holes fixed in our streets. I've lived in my house at 4504 for 38 years, and for a long time, our streets were wonderful. We would call, they would come out, they would repair them. Now, they are so bad that when you go, you're like this, you go around and around to try to dodge the holes. And I do my own yard, a lot of other people do. And last week, I got hit in the back with a rock as a car came by. I didn't mean to, but it's because our streets need fixed. Please, give us some help and try to get Mink Drive. I'll pour the concrete for y'all if you'll just pay for it, because I've done it before. But that's what we're asking, is please take a look at the pictures and give us a little help.
Ms. Johnson, what I need to do is, since we cannot discuss anything you brought up tonight, I need to refer you to the city manager to pursue a discussion of this. Mr. Mayor, any comment you'd like to make regarding this?
You'll be hearing from us.
Thank you. I talked to the street supervisor last week, and then I've called in several times, but please, that's why I brought the pictures. I knew there could be no discussion, but if you just look at it, you'll see.
We'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker, and thank you, Ms. Johnson. Our next speaker is Bill Jornay. Mr. Jornay wishes to speak to us on the subject of free money, and if you will, give us your address for the record. Come ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to respectfully decline. I'm not particularly prepared for this.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Bob Watkins, "A Lot of People."
Bob Watkins, 6140 Blue Spruce Circle. Tonight, I'd like to discuss what I've been hearing for years, so don't any of y'all take this personal. I'm talking about anybody that sits in any office, anywhere, top to bottom, city, state, county, federal, and that's the use of the term, "a lot of people." It showed up a lot, I've heard it a lot at the budget workshops that I've been to. What am I going to tell the people? What this turns out to be is a half a sentence. The rest of the sentence is, what am I going to tell the people that voted for me? This, and once again, it's not y'all, it's always, it's always been that way. A few people turn into a lot of people. I've questioned people that I'm on speaking terms with over the years and asked them what a lot of people was, and I've never gotten anybody to say as high as 100. They're usually talking about a lot of people is someplace like 50 or 20, and I assure you, my wife, having been in that position, when 20 or 30 people call you, it seems like a lot of people. But in a city of 40,000 or 20,000 registered voters, 100 people is not a lot of people. I've also seen a council, not y'all, but one of the previous councils, talk about the fact of this was a lot of people, there was a lot of people in here. This room seats about 100, and I think that counts y'all. That's just not a lot of people. Now, everything depends on the deal you're talking about. A few months ago, a case came before the zoning board of adjustment where there were eight people appeared out of, in the 200-foot range. Eight people in a 200-foot range is a lot of people, and it affected the thinking of the council, I mean, of the board. But you just can't, well, you can because you do, but you shouldn't let, let the people influence you just because they voted for you. And it's a difficult thing. You get into a position, you say, let's just, we'll assume that everybody's honest, so you say, well, if I don't do what these people say, then I don't get reelected, and I can't do all this other good things that I'd like to do. That's not an unreasonable thought, but it's just, you've got to do what is, and I brought it up last time, discussing the mosquito thing. Y'all are elected to be leaders, and you need some input from the citizens. There's a lot of people, and that's fine, but y'all need to make the decision on what's best, not for the several thousand that might have voted for you, or the 20,000 that are registered to vote, but the 40,000 people that live in this city. That's what you have to make the decision. And just because a bunch of people call you, there's a lot of people calling you and telling you that you need to go one way or another, well, that's just not a fact. It'd come up with assistant city manager, and the library, and the animal shelter, and the water rates, and the increase on the taxes, and the mosquitoes. Well, I found out interesting something today. Somebody called me and called my attention something I'd read the other day, but I didn't put a pencil to it. He emailed me some other stuff. They've got all these bats over here in Fort Worth, and in Austin, they said a million and a half bats eat 30,000 pounds of mosquito, of insects a night. And I figured, well, I don't know, you know, for $5,000, we're shooting for, into mosquitoes, maybe we could go buy us 1,000, 1,000 of these. You know, they'd eat 20 pounds of mos, I don't know what a mosquito weighs, but I guarantee you, 20 pounds of mosquitoes is a lot of mosquitoes.
How is my EV?
Just a thought, just a thought. An occasion occurred in a previous council, and I'm going to, so that you don't have a fainting spell, I'm taking up for both sides on this, so I'm not attacking any one person. But when the former city manager situation came up on whether to terminate the city manager, I am, I will and am assuming that the two people that voted one way did what they thought was best for the city. And I'm also assuming that the five people that voted the other way did what they thought was best for the city. And that's what you're supposed to do. You're supposed to do what you think as a group is best for the city. And you just, you can't, you can because you keep doing it, but you shouldn't, you shouldn't let that affect you. Senior tax freeze, that was a bad deal, but, you know, you let, people have always let that bother them. Wastewater thing, you bucked the trend a little there. You didn't quite go as high as you should have, but you went for it.
Mr. Watkins, you have 30 seconds.
Okay. And the, one of the things that I thought, I don't know what, something in church yesterday reminded me, I was trying to think of something that was, that would be considered possibly unpopular or on a national level, that's a civil rights thing. If everybody in the United States, if every person in the United States had gone down and voted, it may not have turned out the way it is now. But some people made the right decision to do the right thing despite possible input. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Our next speaker is Ray Eklund, who wishes to speak on the subject EDC reports to state of Texas. Mr. Eklund, your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Ray Eklund. I live at 2532 Oakwood Terrace here in Holtham City. I spent the last week trying to recover some papers from the city, and ultimately, the Comptroller's website at the state of Texas, the Economic Development Corporation attached to the city of Holtham City is required by statute to submit a report once a year till end of January to tell the state and make a public record of certain financial data. For example, their income, their expenses by categories, and their plans in general, and lastly, their assets. I did the last, just this afternoon, receive the copies from the city, so I haven't reviewed the last couple of years. But using the data on the state comptroller's website, we were able to make some analysis of the material. And what we did was, we looked at the data, the revenue brought in by the EDC, and we heard the report earlier, the quarter cent, and then the half-cent tax that was passed in 2000. And then, I was particularly interested in a couple of the expense areas. So, we made a graph, which I'll submit for the record, discussing the revenue and expense total by year. Basically, in the year 2003, we had a very large jump, and that was with the sale of $3,500,000 worth of debt that the EDC has acquired. That came in as income, so their income rose substantially over past $5 million for that year. But generally, they're running a little over $2 million through 2003. Their expenses, of course, are rising as well, so they're bringing in more money, but they're spending it. Cost to operate the EDC. Now, this particular graph, which I'll submit, and I hope y'all will look at, and we will post on our website as soon as we get our files converted over. I was interested in the overhead, what I call overhead, which was not the total overhead of the EDC, but two parts, the personnel cost and the administration cost. I'm concerned that those are substantial for the amount of money that they bring every and every year. You know, if you're running a different kind of business, you know, you have to look at your overhead costs. If your secretary's costing $90,000 a year, and you're a lawn mowing service company and got 100 customers, you may be a little top-heavy. So, you need to look at those things. What I found in this report is that our administration cost has risen from $29,740 in the year 1997. Five years later, our total of administration and personnel costs have risen to $258,303. I'm sure there's some reason. I was trying to explain what could be a reason, is, you know, you hire a couple, three extra guys or whatever, but there should be a corresponding benefit, okay? If you hire three more carpenters, you ought to get three more rooms built. Yes, your costs went up, but your benefit came through. So, these are things that I would like to see the staff and the reports reflect to us, so we're not left out here in the dark saying, man, these numbers are big. Ray's talking about all these big numbers jumping up and down. I'm not making any accusations, I'm just saying, those are the numbers that are on the chart. I'm asking the parties to explain to us what do they mean. You know, did you hire three more carpenters? I mean, what does that mean to us? Sales tax and revenue versus administration and personnel cost for the EDC. Again, the report that was filed on the web only went through 2003, so there may have been changes last year. But what we see is, the sales tax revenues dropped from over $2 million to substantially less than $2 million. That's the money that they're bringing in, that's the benefit. Yet their cost rose from $72,000 in just three years, from $72,950 back up to that So, while the benefit's dropping, the expense to get the benefits rising over this period. So, those are things I would like to ask you to consider. I know you have the budget coming up, and I know you're working on the EDC budget, on the other hand, for those members that are members of that. And I believe those kinds of considerations need to be caught. I know some of the council members love to push numbers around, and this is my contribution to that thing.
Thank you, Mr. Eklund. Our next speaker... Our next speaker, and our final speaker tonight, of those who have filled out a speaker's request form, is Ms. Pat Conley. Ms. Conley wishes to speak to us on the subject of truck drivers loading and unloading. If you will, Ms. Conley, for benefit of the people who are watching or in the audience, give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Pat Conley. I live at thirty-nine thirteen Kirby Street, Haltem City, Texas. And I just wanted to kind of touch on something that'd been coming up two or three different times when the people were trying to get businesses in as far as the parking of their trucks and unloading and loading in the loading zones and stuff like that. There's one place that you denied the person, and she had come back three times to the, what is that called?
P&amp;Z.
P&amp;Z, yeah, P&amp;Z. Anyway, she'd come back three times and done everything they said, and had it figured out where she, this truck could back in and go forward out after it's unloaded its car, and they said it was still not enough room. And I do, I do know that you can't turn a truck around on a dime. As I said, it was quoted to me just a little bit ago that, I think it said thirty-nine thou, thirty-nine feet, thirty-nine hundred, thirty-nine feet to turn a truck around. Well, I've always been told, you know, give me forty acres and I'll turn this rig around. But we have existing businesses, and I could count probably about seven or eight on Twenty-Eighth Street, that have car lots and stuff, and they load and unload their cars, and they use public roads to do it. They do not have the going in and going out of their property to load and unload these cars, and they're using the sides of road, side roads in Twenty-Eighth Street. I saw twice this last week, a truck parked in the center lane with what we call the chicken lane, and flashers on, driving the truck cars and pickups up and down off of it, and taking them to and from the businesses there on Twenty-Eighth Street. So, if you guys want to go ahead and not, and not let these other people have this because of that, then you need to start enforcing the rest of the businesses around the town that are using the public streets and stuff to blocking it, and just don't stop that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Conley. That concludes tonight. No, that concludes tonight, those who wish to, who filled out the speaker's request form. I mentioned last time that I opened the door for people to address who had spoken before, and I said I wouldn't do that tonight, and so I won't. Do we have any others in the audience who haven't already spoken who wish to address the council? Okay, there being none, we'll move then to item number eleven, resignation of board members. Do we have anyone who, who the council needs to take action on? Okay, there being none, what about appointments and reappointments to boards or commissions? Councilmember Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, since we approved agenda item number five, I'm sorry, four, it was agenda number four, I'd like to make two liaison contact appointments. Actually, it's one liaison contact and one member of a committee. First one is, is I'd like to move to nominate for the library contact, Rich Hutchison, and the second one I'd like to do is nominate for the appointment to the Animal Advisory Committee, Kim Reese.
Okay, we have had two recommendations, asking for ratification, if you will, members of the council, express your wishes regarding ratification of these two. And that is by unanimous vote, and I do have one.
That's a conflict.
Are we clear on that? Okay. I have a couple of appointments to make to the Haltem City Housing Authority. I have an individual who has served on that committee for a few years, Mr. Darrell Smith, that I am appointing to that board tonight as a commissioner. And this year, they need a resident commissioner, and I have before me an application from Rebecca Proctor. I have spoken with Ms. Tyner down at the housing authority, she is in agreement with this appointment. So, I'm making the appointment of Rebecca Proctor, who lives in the project, as well as Mr. Smith. This is not an action that the council needs to ratify, I simply make the statement at this time for a purpose of just making it a public record. Okay, there being no further business before the council, and no items to be discussed in executive session, the council stands adjourned for the night.